So, yes, they've saved some fun, exciting information for the lab. But of course, we all know what the issue is that we're facing. Is that Valley Health has provided Anthem with a termination notice effective December 31st, meaning as of January 1st, 2021, Valley Health will no longer be in the network of providers for Anthem. Now, we do understand that contract negotiations are ongoing.
Are they?
We're hopeful and keeping our fingers crossed. But haven't really gotten any updates since last week on any sort of negotiation this week. I do have, we did just get their, Anthem has a microsite that's now open. It's anthem.com/valleyhealth. We're going to be sending that out to our employees. So you can, you know, anyone, any member can go, or anyone can go to the site, see what updates Anthem's posted, and also some other things that we're going to talk about here today. But who it impacts, of course, number one, we're part of the Local Choice Health Benefits Program, the TLC Network, that's your locality.
Is that the people that's negotiating for us?
Uh, no, no. Anthem is our health-
The state is, right?
No, Anthem is the health insurance-
Local Choice is the state.
Yes, they are the minister-
That's the state. Anthem is their agent.
Yeah, Anthem is the one that's negotiating for itself.
Anthem is the health insurance carrier that Local Choice has contracted to provide the health insurance, if that helps.
It does.
Okay. COVA, that's the Commonwealth of Virginia Plan, state employees. Of course, any federal employees that may live in our, in the Valley Health area that have Anthem.
Under COVA.
There are larger, some large local governments that are not part of Local Choice, but contracted with Anthem individually, like we used to prior to 2016. Those are, I think Frederick County and maybe Frederick County Public Schools are an example of that. Private sector, individual marketplace coverage. So in some, depending on your zip code, in some areas Anthem's the only carrier that offers it. And individuals who have Medicare soft limits through Anthem, this affects those people. So bottom line, the first thing that jumps out at us is what is it? If we go, if we go out of network, what is it going to cost? So the next two slides are the comparisons for your deductible than your out-of-pocket max for the two plans that we have. So the Key Advantage 1000 Plan, which is our most popular plan, it's what we call our base plan. And then the next one is our bio. But there to the left is our in-network, the deductible per person, two or more, and then the out-of-pocket max. Your out-of-pocket max thing where your safety limit, you know, something more catastrophic happens, that's what that is. So you can see when you go out of network on the deductible, it doubles. And then doesn't quite double on the out-of-pocket max, but that's a pretty big number when you're out of network. So that's concern. For the 250, you'll see the numbers are just slightly lower because it is a more expensive plan. The employee pays more for it. So the deductibles are lower and the out-of-pocket max is lower. There are been, there are out-of-network benefits in Anthem, in the plan that we have under both the Key Advantage 1000 and the 250. So once employee meets the out-of-network deductible, whatever that may be, the employee then pays 30% co-insurance for medical and behavioral health services. So copayments do not apply to out-of-network medical and behavioral health services. So basically, you're going to pay whatever up to your deductible, your out-of-network deductible for your service. So instead of your $20 or $25 copay at your doctor visit, for your sick visit, it's going towards your deductible and your out-of-pocket max, and then charged at 30%. Does that make sense? Now, copayments and co-insurance do still apply for vision and prescription and dental coverages, of course. So I'm looking at a couple of options, you know, what are our alternatives? And we have certainly been checking, I just had an email, or yeah, an email from Buck Smith a little bit ago from the schools. We're all checking to see what the others are doing and sharing as much information as possible. We could terminate our existing coverage with, through Local Choice. That's who the notice has to be provided to because that's our administrator. In our contract, there's a 90-day written notice required. So you have to notify within 90 days ahead. And then there's a 30-day right of rescission if, so for example, if negotiations are resolved, you have that 30-day right of rescission. Then we would have to institute the RFP process to find a new carrier. And there is a consultant that is available to assist to streamline the RFP process. He's already working with other nearby localities. He's been working with the commission as well on this.
Will this give us, give the person who's on this insurance plan? So for instance, if my husband carries Cigna out of Northern Virginia, and I'm on the county plan, it gives me the option to go back on his plan with him? Can I do that?
Well, we have not gotten any confirmation that Anthem simply losing a provider of their network is not necessarily a qualifying event.
That's what I wanted to find out, what the qualifying event relationship is.
Now, the qualifying event would be if you lost your coverage altogether.
Right.
But, you know, we've been in contact with Local Choice and, you know, they're statewide.
So you know we're not losing coverage, we're just paying more, so.
Yes, and they, not that they have an official stance on it because that's not their role, but it is up to the carrier to manage their network.
Because you could go to another area-
You have another provider.
When they need to realize that Valley Health has the monopoly of the whole valley. You got to go a long way.
We're going to look at the map.
Yep, yep, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't put that up here. Yeah, we'll get to that, but I do want to stick that up there. So we do have, you know, there are sample RFPs that are already out there that we can use and just cut and paste into if that's a route that we decide to go.
It says 90 days written notice required for terminating. I'm assuming you've already done that.
We have not. And we're going to talk about that.
Okay.
Yep, not yet. We have not.
You have to have something to back it up first, right?
We haven't blinked yet.
Yep, yep, that's right. Big, you know, one of the biggest concerns with doing that, with leaving Local Choice or Anthem in general, is this adverse experience adjustment, AEA. So there's the sections of the administrative code that it comes from, but it provides for potential AEA to withdrawing employers. So it requires any withdrawing employer to contribute their prerated share of any operating loss experienced during prior plan years within six months of the terminated participation. Further, that DHRM, that's Department of Human Resource Management, they are the overall administrator. They reserve the right to modify the amount of the AEA applicable to the terminated employer for a period not to exceed 12 months from the end of the plan year in which termination occurred. That's a big unknown for us, you know, because it's plan-wide. We don't know what the potential loss could be.
But it's a lot.
It could be. I mean, I, we don't have any way of knowing that.
We would anticipate a lot.
Yes, I mean, in trying to play the worst-case scenario and then for best, but-
Yeah, very kind.
But that's a concern. Nothing's ever simple. Another concern is, is you can re-participate in Local Choice. This administrative code section states local employers that withdraw from the Health Benefits Program may re-enter the program only with the consent of DHRM following application. So we have to apply and they have to approve. Local employers seeking re-participation may be required to serve a waiting period and only upon payment of all pending contributions, penalties, or other assessments. So for example, that AEA, whatever that, as I've lost it already.
The county, the county is, the county is committed to Anthem through April?
Through June.
June.
Yeah, our plan year follows with our fiscal year.
Right, okay.
Yep. We, depending on the RFP process, if that's the route that we want to go, what would our new plan year be? Would it be six months because that's what's left? Or 12 months or 18 months?
Right.
It could potentially be 18 months, depending on if we ask for rate lock-in and things of that nature. 18 months is a long plan year for people and to try to have an, if you don't like it, and trying to have an open enrollment period. Your deductibles start over, your out-of-pocket max starts over potentially. Those are all little indirect things that you just don't necessarily think about right off, right off the top. Just leaving the pool of Local Choice and the blending of the experience that you have through Local Choice is a little scary because you're pooling, you know, a percentage of our claims through Local Choice right now. So our new rating would have to be based on our experience. And you just don't know how the carrier's going to look at that. You have to provide the data, but we just don't have any way of knowing right now. The other option is to finish the plan year through Local Choice and Anthem. Stick it out with Anthem. We would still proceed with a normal, our normal schedule for looking at other carriers. You could still go through the RFP process. You would do that, you would be getting that in late winter, early, just after the first of the year. Contract negotiations are ongoing. We have been told by both parties that they're committed to reaching some sort of resolve. We just don't know what that can be and when that could be. It's not often that systems leave Anthem networks, is our understanding. It happens very, very infrequently. And when they leave, they're back usually within the last 10, just over 10 years. One was out a month, one was out six months that we're aware of. There are alternative providers to Valley Health. That's where the map comes in. The, basically the highlight of that was just in looking at our hospitals. So the hospitals in our, in our area, this info came right from Google Maps and using Warren County Government Center as the focal, as the starting point. Falkir Health, and this was of course fastest route. So it may be a little bit different mileage on the map. At 32.6 miles, 40 minutes. 40 minutes to, so that's Wanton. 40 minutes to Haymarket. Just under 50 minutes to Martinsburg. And an hour and eight minutes to Harrisonburg. So depending on where our employee population, you know, where you live, if you live in Page County, it's just as quick for you to go to the mountain than go to Harrisonburg. If you were in-
Or on the east.
Right, you, exactly.
If you live in Linden, it's just as fast for you to go down.
Absolutely.
To Haymarket, it only takes me 20 minutes from where I live.
That's what hurt, is the elderly and those who live at a poverty level or don't have transportation.
Sure, absolutely.
I know my 89-year-old father-in-law's not going to be able to-
Sit her up to Harrisonburg or-
No, no, we can get him there.
Sure.
But, you know, not everybody has somebody that can get them there.
Right.
So that's the-
Does he have supplemental Anthem or see Medicare? Because most of those-
He has supplemental.
Yeah, I was going to say, most of those folks don't have Medicare and aren't going to be affected by this.
But, but it's not just the hospital, that's the thing.
Yeah, it's the doctors.
Because the doctor's offices have been basically forced to buy in and become Valley-owned. So now they're under, they're going to be under the same thing. So it's not just, oh, I'll go drive down to Falkir Hospital to go to the ER, you know, for my earache. It's, you know, blood pressure check time and that doctor accepts, you know, it's Valley Health. So it's going to trickle down.
It's hard, it's hard, it's making a decision. So what this map is, and Emma in Plating, she did a wonderful job with this. But, so she has it color-coded, so of course the hospitals have the H mark in them. And that's, I don't know if you can come up and look at that afterwards, but see it maybe a little bit better on the, on the big map. But showing within 50-mile radius and a 70-mile radius. So these are alternative providers to Valley Health. So these are non-Valley Health providers who are in the Anthem network. So we have, we have a whole listing that was actually about 55 pages.
Suburban, I thought that was Subaru.
What did you?
Suburban.
Oh, we have a whole listing. And actually, the school system, they broke it down for us by, it's in a spreadsheet, they broke it down by zip code, so you can see, but it's everything. So, you know, like you and I, living in Bentonville, it showed these providers in Bentonville. Their counseling services, they must have to have their own address listed where it's not actually a provider office that you can go to. So this kind of shows you, based on the color code, and these are the most common, you know, family, general practitioners, geriatric, women's health, pediatrics, those sorts of things, what is located where. So that's what that map is supposed to do for us. So it's just a tool for us to use.
I can, you can see that, like at Falkir, they do, their doctor's offices kind of surround the hospital.
Right there, exactly. Again, the big concerns with the cost of staying and trying to wait it out is the cost to the employees and the members, particularly the balance billing. The balance billing is the difference between the provider's charge and the allowable amount under, under the insurance. You know, the ability, are some people going to be able to change providers? It's all well and good to have alternative providers, but are they accepting new patients? Especially if there's a big push to that. I mean, that's certainly going to be up to those providers. We don't, don't have any control over that.
And right now with COVID, that's going to be an added problem.
Bad time.
And if we're talking about six months, we have a lot of people who may have minimum interaction with any medical provider during that six months.
I mean, you have, depending on your, which portion of your population you're talking about, you may have someone who goes very regularly, you may have someone who goes once a year. In that six months, it's not going to affect them, you know. But you never know when you're going to have that emergency.
That's right.
You don't know, and none of us have that.
You have cancer patients who are in the middle of treatments.
Now, there is, we understand from Anthem, from the microsite, that there is a transition of care that is available. They look at it on a case-by-case, but pregnancy, cancer patients, things like that, when you're already undergoing treatment or care, that there is a continuity of care that they do look at and would help, exactly, that they would help with.
Thank goodness for that.
So we, again, we always look at what's everybody around us doing. You know, we're all checking with each other. And it's like, are you jumping? I don't know, are you jumping? It's that, you know, it's that sort of thing.
Right, everybody's asking.
Yep, so who we, we know that have confirmed notice to terminate is Shundo County and Shundo County Public Schools, Clark County Public Schools. Now, Clark County in the school system, they're a joint government school, just like Falkir. Town of Beargill, City of Winchester, and RSW Regional Jail. So those are the ones that have confirmed with us that they have given the notice to terminate January 1. Our public schools has not, as of yet, Town of Front Royal has not, and Northern Shunde Valley Regional Commission. November 1st has kind of been the date that's been bounced around to do that.
If we look at November 1st, then we're going to have a 30-day period where we are out of network. And if they reach an agreement, we have until December 31 to-
Reinvest.
To reinstate.
Because you would be given a February, a January 31 termination date.
Right.
So that would give them through the end of December to reach some sort of agreement. If it happens at the 11th hour, that was our concern about a January 1st termination. If they come to terms at 12 noon on December 31st, you're outside your right of rescission. And that's up, you know, you have to go.
With the other hospitals that are around here in particular, there is incentive for Valley Health to come to terms at some point. They, they had $62 million profits last year.
I thought they were nonprofit.
Yeah.
I'm smiling because I'm being facetious.
Revenue expense.
But they have a cost of service that they say this procedure costs this much more. And Anthem says the rates that they are asking for some of these procedures exceed what they're paying in Northern Virginia today. So Anthem's in the, and Anthem made money last year too.
Right.
But they're in the position, if they approve it, then number one, they're going to have to turn around and renegotiate with Northern Virginia. And number two, they're going to raise everybody rate, everybody's rate. If there's a 30% increase in the procedure, there's going to be a significant portion in the rate increase.
And to give you an idea, an MRI at Valley Health has a charge of between $8,000 and $10,000. An MRI in Hagerstown, Maryland, $767 to $900.
So you guys want to know what's crazy about that? Is that you can go in and pay cash less money than that price. Now tell me why that is. If I am a cash payer, often that MRI will cost me less money than it would if I got it paid through an insurance company.
And this is a service, everything.
Something's wrong with the system.
Same reason that if you are taken to the hospital and an ambulance takes you, they have a billing charge.
Right.
But, and that billing charges has set rates of hypothetically $60 for the ambulance trip. But if you give them $20 cash, you're even.
Yeah.
Same thing.
It's kind of crazy, but anyway, yeah.
It's a shame we can't just boy pop, show them, but you can't expect people to do that.
Well, that's the-
The other piece is what we do July 1. And one of the other jurisdictions is looking at trying to form a coalition. They have their own consultant, separate from the consultant that the district has, the commission has been using and that we've been working with. And they're looking at whether or not they can put together a coalition. We said we were interested in looking at it to see what it would be. The concern is it's going to be a smaller coalition. So there's going to be more wide fluctuation in the rates. And we're a bit concerned about that. And we're going to look at that and see if that may be what we want to do July 1. Because in either case, we can do something July 1.
Are we, are we big enough to self-insure?
We've been self-insured in the past. We made the change to Local Choice in 2016. We had some really good years. Yes, we are big enough, but it all depends on your experience. Then we had a few years that weren't so good and-
Administered it because I know with the state, that they have Anthem administrated.
Well, Anthem was our carrier. So Anthem, we, we did contract with Anthem, was our health insurance carrier. Delta Dental was our dental insurance carrier, which carried right over into, was still Anthem and Delta Dental, but under the umbrella of Local Choice. The year that we made the move to Local Choice, we'd gotten a renewal from Anthem. And if memory serves me, it was either 12 or 14% increase that year, is what we were facing. We had gotten the renewal, or the quote from Local Choice, and it ended up being, I think it was a 5.68, don't hold me exactly to that number. It was either 4.68 or 5.68 decrease in rates forced to go under the umbrella of Local Choice.
Because you have such a much larger pool, that you're better protected from any individual incidents.
I mean, I mean, could you work as a, as a, not just us, I mean, couldn't?
Like the Lord Fairfax District.
Yeah, we have a whole district.
That's the coalition we're talking about.
Right, yeah. That, then you have a lot more power and leverage to get lower rates from-
But we're still significantly smaller than the state.
Well, I was going to say, in COVA, that state, that's what we have. And when you, when you think of how many state boys you're talking about, not, not just VDOT, but VDOT ABC, GMD, you know.
So just as a point, just as a point of reference for you all? Still, with even all of these crazy little machinations, government has a much lower rate per month than like commercial because my-
And they're sweating, they're sweating too.
Yeah, my husband, we pay $1,200 a month to carry a card. Is, and that's a lot of money. And that's just for the three of them on this one, because it's so much cheaper for me to be on this one.
Just for Steve and I, is retired. It's almost $20,000 a year for us to be insured.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, we were, we were 18, 1,800 bucks a month. We're just old.
Yeah.
We're hoping to get to the Medicare old part.
You know, but you also still need a supplement.
You still need supplemental.
You still need a supplement. And again, any which way you turn, you've got this shit.
And, and you know, this is a shame. This is, Anthem, I mean, Valley Health needs to be totally ashamed of theirself. Here they're making millions of dollars as a nonprofit. I'm told, the staff is being told, they're not going to get a raise this year because of COVID, yet we made $62 million. So, you know, they made that. And a sham of a hospital service is out here, and now this. I'm sorry, I'm done with them. You know, I seriously am. If I have a heart attack and you have to take me out here, fine, but this shouldn't go in Falkir. All right, I'll take my chances going to Falkir. I hate to say that because, you know, but I, I don't know how you can be in the human services and then do this to people just to make money.
Well, if you're going to do that, make sure you have EMTs working up there at Chester Gap.
That's right.
Make sure they're on duty.
So I guess, you know, the question is, you know, are we open to any discussion or opinions on what route we look at going? So that, that's why we're-
We're going to sit there till November, and then we're going to see where we're at.
We're going to work on palette, right? They're going to be 11.
And we'll send something, we're going to send something out to our employees. I've already got the memo, three-quarters of the way drafted, with the microsite information for Anthem to keep them updated. And, you know, any new information that becomes available, we'll share.
It's a relief to know that for those that are, you know, going through a pregnancy and now scared, or those that are on some kind of dialysis or chemotherapy or something like that, that-
That's continuity.
That there is going to be, oh, you know, they're not going to get thrown out.
I haven't seen all the details of it yet. It was just an overview. I don't know what the timeframe is or, you know, if it's the, I would assume the duration of the pregnancy. I don't know all the details yet, but, but that was right on the front page of the, of the microsite. So that was a little-
That's a lot of stress on people that don't need that stress on. But if we can get that out to them, to help relay that.
Well, the other part of it is too, there's so much here now that is Valley Health. I mean, like, I know everything my family uses is Valley Health. So if I have to go out, then that's the time that it takes. Where now I can take my child to the doctor then, or I can go to school, take them up, take them to-
They're not out of work very long.
Now, now it's going to take at least two hours, if not longer, just to do that. So just even those types of resources that are being drained because-
Someone has to take a whole day sick or half-day sick instead of something that they could have done in their lunch break.
Well, I hope you also have set your time, your appointment time to go to the doctor. Because if you just have to go, they might, may not even be able to see them.
Well, that's the other thing, that these providers already are struggling because of COVID. And now, like you said, you know, if we all start heading to Falkir or Harrisonburg, you know, they may throw up their hands and say, I'm not taking new patients. And then what you do? And that happens a lot.
It's another thing in 2020 to worry about. So just wanted to update you with the most recent information we had and answer any questions that you may have or any advice. We're open. Any questions at all?
No.
I mean, is there any way we could, you know, they probably have no conscience to appeal to. They know what they're doing to people now.
Contract negotiations happen all the time. All the time, they're just not-
This has happened before too, hasn't it?
All the time.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the previous, yeah.
Usually, it hasn't been quite this out-and-out.
They've been more vocal about it.
Yeah, it's more vocal. I assume it's a negotiation tactic, but from a who's perspective.
It would be from Anthem, so I'm sure.
Actually, we were, it was Valley Health. It was the understanding that we have that, that who put the information out to their, to their customers. I don't know, I hadn't gotten anything personally from Anthem.
Valley Health put it out.
I've gotten personal information from it.
From what I understand, Anthem was shocked.
It's interesting, the thing, Valley Health puts the one you're not willing to give. And, you know, we certainly don't want to be in the middle of war picking sides. You know, it's not that at all, but-
No, we just want coverage.
Yes. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So I'm sure each has their valid points and concerns.
Charlie, you did, you did a good job.
Yeah, awesome, thank you for this.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for keeping us ahead of it.
Every day, I thank heaven we...
I wish that somehow we could reinvent the healthcare system without the, the insurance. Cause it's very, I mean, if you could create a cash system again, that was a group cash.
Go to the doctor, bring them a dozen eggs.
Exactly. My grandmother used to bring, bring her doctor all kinds of baked goods, so yes.
I think there are some localities that have, there are some larger, larger localities that do have their own health centers.
Yes.
You know, that, that is out there. I mean, there are certainly models for that. It's being able to do that. It's all about money.
There are different insurance models too, where groups of the same, you know, mindset, get together and go.
Oh, don't let that thing get away from you there.
I'm not.
Don't want people to know.
Yeah, how great we're...
I know. Yeah. He's still rolling. You need to say the meeting's over so he can cut it off.
Yes, we're done.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.